Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Oregon Board of Educational Organizational Meeting of January ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Would you please all rise for our Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call to the board, please, Mrs. Fruth.
Mr. Eversman?
Present.
Mrs. Mulder?
Here.
Mr. Savick?
Here.
And Mr. Zaviski?
Here.
This time, can we please have a motion to adopt the agenda as written for this organizational meeting?
So who?
Second.
First and second, Mrs. Fruth, please, roll call.
All right, Mrs. Mulder?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
And Mr. Savick?
Yes.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate two folks who, one is returning to the board. Mr. Zaviski has been on the board for sixteen years, and we congratulate him on winning another election in November, and we also welcome Mr. Eversman, who will be joining the board now for the very first time, so congratulations to both of you. This is the annual meeting where we elect our officers for this, and this board, the board will operate under this direction for the coming year. At this point, I would like to ask the board for nominations for board president. Do we have any nominations for the board president?
Ms. Chairman, I'll nominate Carol Mulder.
We have a nomination, so do we know it? Do we have a second for that? I will second that. Do we have any other nominations at this point?
I'm going to close nominations.
We have a motion to close the nominations, and do we have a second for that motion, please?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to close the nominations for president of the Oregon Board of Education for the coming year. Mrs. Fruth will call, please.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes.
Okay, we have closed the nominations. Now a vote for Mrs. Mulder for president of the board. Mrs. Fruth?
Oh, Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulder?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
At this point, we will entertain a motion for vice president of the Oregon Board of Education for the coming school year. A nomination?
I'd like to nominate Dan Savick for the vice chairman.
We have a nomination. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other nominations?
I move to close nominations.
So the motion has been made to close nominations. Do we have a second for that, please?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to close nominations. Mrs. Fruth, please, a roll call for the closing of nominations for vice president.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulder?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
All right, now we have a roll call on the nomination that's been put forth for the vice president. Mrs. Fruth, a roll call, please.
All right, Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
And Mr. Savick?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you all very much, and it is a pleasure to once again turn the pedal over to an unbelievable person, an unbelievable leader for this district and for this board, Carol Mulder. Carol?
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your vote of confidence this evening. We're going to start with the review of our ethical policy. In your folder, you will find a page that has B policy, B, B, F dash E, and it is our board member code of ethics. While serving as a member of my Board of Education, I accept the responsibility to improve public education. To that end, I will, starting with Mr. Zaviski, would you start with the first one, please?
I remember that my first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of the students attending the public schools.
Obeying the laws of Ohio and the United States. Respect the confidentiality of privileged information.
Recognize that as an individual member, I have no authority to speak or act for the board.
Work to work with other members to establish effective board policies.
Delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent and staff.
Encourage ongoing communications among board members, the board, students, staff, and the community.
Render all decisions based on the available facts and my independent judgment rather than succumbing to the influence of individuals or special interest groups.
Make efforts to attend all board meetings.
Become informed concerning the issues to be considered at each meeting.
Improve my board leadership by studying educational issues and by participating in service programs.
Support the employment of staff members based on qualifications and not as the result of influence.
Cooperate with other board members and administrators to establish a system of regular and impartial evaluations of all staff.
Avoid conflicts of interest or the appearance thereof. Refrain from using my board position for benefit of myself, family members, or business associates, and...
Express my personal opinions, but, once the board has acted, accept the will of the majority. And that's our code of ethics for all board members. Item B under new business is a resolution, the continuance, continuation of the board's service fund for the 2024 fiscal year. It's appropriated last November and is provided by Ohio Revised Code, Section three-three-one-five-point-one-five. May I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
A second for the resolution?
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Fruth, a roll call, please.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulder?
Yes.
And Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Item C under new business, it is recommended that we continue using the following legal counsel: Spangler, Napason, Dinsmore, and Scholl LLC, Ricker and Eckler, and Weston Heard. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes. Item T, we need a motion to eliminate board committees and liaisons. It will be replaced by the superintendent committees. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulder?
Yes.
And Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Okay, item E, we need a time, date, and schedule for regular meetings. We have been using the third Tuesday of the month at six o'clock. Is that still acceptable to everyone? Do we have any discussion on that, please? Good? Okay, we need a motion?
Oh, please, for motion for this? We're just setting the meeting, we're sitting the meetings, do we need a motion?
No, we can just say it. Okay. It's closing, we need a motion for closing, please.
So moved.
Was that Mr. Savick? Excuse me, okay.
Yes, second on the close.
Thank you.
Discussion? Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes.
Okay, and then closes the organizational meeting. Moving on to the, uh, six-ten? January ninth meeting of the Board of Education. We've had the Pledge of Allegiance, the moment of silence, so we'll dispense with those, but let's do a roll call, please.
All right, Mr. Eversman?
Here.
Mrs. Mulder?
Here.
Mr. Savick?
Here.
And Mr. Zaviski?
Here.
Please silence all personal electronic devices during the meeting. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as written, please.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? The roll call, please.
All right, Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes.
Mr. Gregory, I'm going to hand the next one over to you.
Yeah, no problem, and it's just a quick way to say thank you. January is the OSBA Board or Board of Education Month, i.e., you each have a certificate in your packets from the OSBA organization, and there's a poster right here kind of recognizing and shooting for the stars, but I will say, I want to thank all of you for everything. I mean, you know, Jeff, you've been on here now sixteen years. We've worked together for a very, very long time, so congrats on coming back to the board. Mike, who's not here, is twelve years. Obviously, our board president, Carol, with fourteen years, and Dan, four total years. I can't thank you enough for your service to OCS. We are shooting for the stars, we're doing everything we can to continue to make this place the best place to be for kids, and without your support, we can't do that. So certainly, thank you. And Jerry, welcome. We have, it's really kind of day one officially, but, you know, the impact will be immeasurable one little day at a time, one event at a time, one vote at a time, so thank you for wanting to serve our community. We appreciate it very, very much. So I just want to thank all of you, and we appreciate what you do. It's not an easy job.
That's for sure.
Yeah.
Public participation at meetings, I have no cards, do you have any cards?
I have no cards.
No? Okay. Please be advised that this meeting is being audiotaped and will be available on the district website. We are now ready for the treasurer's report, Mrs. Fruth.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Mulder. Just to note, there are no updates to the permanent appropriation measures, so that will be struck out of the motion. I put these in your binders, it came later than normal, I do apologize. We had, I don't know, plague in the office last week, we've everybody out. True cash reports in front of you, we're trending very well. The most important thing is that we are in good financial position. They recommend thirty to ninety true cash days, and we're at one hundred and seventy-three, so we continue to be, we have a very strong cash position. I'm sure I'll be adjusting the estimates as we go, but as of now, you know, we're at forty-nine point eight for half the year, so I think we're doing pretty good so far, and we're right on track. So unless there are questions on that, I just had a couple items, just so you're aware. The audit is typically done by now, but the outside auditors asked for a month's extension. The gap conversion group had a delay. I guess the, there's new gaps being out there requiring identification of prepaid software license liabilities, and so this just got bulked up as with each client. Ours were fine, but anyway, so we'll have our report at the end of January, I, you know, nothing major, I just wanted you aware of that, that there is a delay. Josh gets big stars. He actually looked at my bus inventory for me so many times, you know, I think I get it back, and he goes, oh yeah, this looks numbered, count them. And we did find some discrepancies where some old buses were still on and some new buses weren't. It was just a matter, I think they used to just count the buses, so some of the serial numbers are improper, but we've gotten that fixed, but I just want you aware of that. And in the grants, this month, we will be working with Dean and Hal and everybody to finalize ESER three grant funding. I just wanted to give you a little, you know, this has been going on for quite some time, I just wanted to give you a highlight of what we've actually received in ESER funding and all the monies. The first line is, you know, obviously, we had Corolla, we have ESER one, two, three, ARB IDEA. We had a total of right under six point five million dollars provided to us through ESER funding or through federal and state funding. As of today, or December thirty-first, we've spent five and a half, almost five point six million of it, so we only have, well, I mean, still, I smile, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars of ESER three. These funds have helped us extend our general fund, obviously. Well, some of it has been used to offset salaries, some of it's been used on supplies for when we were going through the, I don't know what to call it, the pandemic, sorry. So I just want you aware of where we're at, and all reports are filed, and we've jumped through all the hoops, but just so you're aware of where we're at. And just a little note, the CUP reports are out, and so I'll try to begin in the next couple of weeks, the comparatives for all of you to see where we stand with other districts, so where we're good, where we're bad. I remind everybody, we are a comprehensive school, so our numbers look higher, but we are, we're not, it's just we're comprehensive, we offer career tech, and we're only one of, what, thirty? I forget now, so many districts in the state that do that, so sometimes our comparatives look off, but we're providing services other schools don't, pretty much. So, okay, that is my report, unless there are questions, I just wanted you to be aware.
Thank you, Mrs. Fruth.
Thank you.
You have a motion to accept the treasurer's report, please?
So moved, and like I said, with item C stricken from that.
Thank you.
Uh, may we have a second, please?
Second, without revision.
Any discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Fruth.
All right, Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes. Any need for an executive session from anyone? Okay, we'll move on from that. The consent agenda. Are there any items that the members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing none, a motion is needed to vote on the consent agenda items. A motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Quick question, Hal, these are, I'd say mainly the spring sports?
Yeah.
Have you, there's some, has the head coach, some don't. Have the head coaches already been approved previously?
Yeah, yeah. And that's a very good question. I've been working with Mr. Kiss on coming up with a more, I guess, regular schedule of when we do things like that, and so we've been having a lot of discussions with the right, so we kind of, on the same month, we're trying to do the same.
It'd be nice to see all the head coaches approve one meeting, then they won't.
Exactly, and I agree with you, and so I think we'll be much better shape next year.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, our discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes. Moving on to item ten of new business, we have donations. We need a motion to accept the following donations. An anonymous donor gave two thousand dollars to the food service department for student lunch fees, and the Jerusalem Township firefighters supplied a thousand dollars worth of mulch for the Jerusalem playground. May I have a motion to accept these, please?
So moved, gratitude.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll just share a little bit, the donation for the food services and to the balances. We are required because of how the whole structure of the food and lunches and the federal money and all that comes in, that when we do get a donation, that it is, it's either targeted for individual kids, which is appropriate, or it's spread out uniformly. So in this case, that two thousand was targeted for very specific twelve kids, I believe, twelve families. So just to kind of put some clarification on that, it's not just a, it doesn't just go into the food service fund, it will take care of some of the balances for twelve families, is my understanding, that the most need.
Yeah, and if there's a balance on those accounts, they don't go on field trips, so this really helps some families who can't afford to do things, so. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes. Okay.
Mrs. Mulder?
Yes, yes, sir.
Just a, I believe it's a typographical error, if we could look back at number three in certified staff changes under A, and then you have one, two, and three, the motion to employ the following substitute, Madison Fernier, two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three?
Should be twenty-three, twenty-four.
And I believe that would be, or not?
Well, no, that is, no, that's correct, no, you are correct, no, you're right, you're correct.
Okay, so that should say twenty-three, twenty-four?
Yeah, you're correct.
Just so it corrects the departmental record, if we could.
No, perfect, thank you.
Got it. Moving to item B, disposal of materials. There are district-wide one hundred and ninety-seven teacher and student materials, plus from Clay High School, a trumpet with no brand name, a trumpet with a serial number four-five-one-two-nine-nine, and an Alto Sax with the number N-O-six-zero-two-six. We would like to dispose of those things. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes. Item C, OSBA policy service. We need a motion to renew the agreement with OSBA to provide a web-based policy service at a cost of one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? And we do use this, and we are in the process of redoing our policy book, so good deal. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes. Item D, public records training. The Board of Education appoints the treasurer, CFO, Jane Fruth, as its designated for public records training. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
A discussion? And roll call.
Was that Mr. Zaviski? Sorry. Okay. Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulder?
Yes.
And Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, disposal of equipment and materials. The items listed in the December nineteenth agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with board policy. And moving to Mr. Gregory's superintendent's report.
Thank you. So I'm going to, I kind of gave you a, I guess, a possible template that we can begin to use as in the organizational meeting, we, I guess we made it public that we're no longer going to have, quote, board committees, but we are, and I still want board involvement in the areas that we had committees in, and those were personnel policy, capital, finance, academic, legislative, legislative, what am I missing? I'm missing one, feels like I'm missing one.
Student achievement.
Student achievement, thank you. So we will continue to have those, but by doing it as a superintendent's committee, it allows us a little bit more flexibility when and how we hold those meetings. Again, we will follow Austin China laws related to any number of personnel, and only two board members can be, but I do appreciate that. So what I thought I would do under each of those areas is we'll make sure that we're touching on those topics. If we do have a meeting in any one of those areas, then the board member that maybe participated or is willing to share part of that can help support, you know, my report, if you will, it's really our report. So just a couple of personnel policy things. There's really no significant personnel changes going on right now, although you can see as what you just approved, we are starting to receive retirement notices already here in January, so we've had a couple, and I know we'll have a few more. I'm anticipating maybe a low to modest number of retirements this year. I anticipate- modest number of retirements this year. I anticipate a whole bunch more next year, um, district-wide, but this year should be, I think, relatively manageable. You know, I've said that before, and it's been really high, but, uh, I don't think that's going to be the case this year, so, so I'm looking forward to a, a good spring of hiring. And then finally, just, uh, we've been working on our policy review. We're down to just the last couple of policies that we need to finalize, and then I'm going to get a meeting scheduled with Mrs. Molnar, Mrs. Fruit, and myself, uh, hopefully next week with, uh, OSBA to, uh, for first reading in February of the entire policy book. So we can kind of talk through, uh, at our next work session, maybe how we want to distribute that, or, or how the board may want to look at that. I mean, it's, you know, if, if you intend to read it all, you're going to need a good amount of time to read every single policy. Uh, but we worked with OSBA, and, uh, you know, she's an attorney and guided us on, on a lot of the decisions, and we were all kind of a part of those policies in our particular areas, Mrs. Fruit in the finance, Mr. Sandwich in a lot of the, uh, the, uh, the operations side of those. So, so that's what's going on with policy. Uh, capital improvements, I, I asked Mr. Sandwich just a couple of updates, and he's been working hard with, uh, with Wes and Jane to really spend the money that we got through all the safety grants. So that's been a quite a chore. It's been a good problem to have, but it's been an awful lot. You can see some of the areas we're upgrading, and these are significant things that, that I know have been on the to-do list maybe for a while, but, uh, upgrade our alarm systems, keypads, move into more cellular communication from phone, uh, from phone, uh, upgrading our radios, upgrading our camera, camera services and battery backups. I mean, we've been doing that, seems like forever, but our cameras are getting old now, so believe it or not. Uh, we do have a very robust system. Uh, and then replacing some of the old cameras with newer, uh, some, some doors and, and the PA systems, which is huge. I mean, they are falling apart literally, uh, in some of our buildings.
Hal, was this a grant we actually had to submit for, or was it just something you kind of said we want?
It wasn't like the grant for career tech where it was a multiple-page grant application, but Mr. Sandwich did have to put in for each of these grants through a, a state portal. So we did apply for all of these. Once we became aware it took, for a few of them, it took several, several times, several rounds before we were granted it, but at the end, we were granted quite a bit. I don't know, any you'd like to add?
Uh, the, the large amount is over four hundred thousand dollars that we received, but that took four rounds for us to get that, so.
Yeah, so based on that, thank you, you know.
Yeah, for sure.
I'd say there's a lot of...
You put a lot of work into it.
I don't say free money, but available money that don't, doesn't have to be taxpayers pay for.
Absolutely. Yeah, and significant upgrades on our operations side that we probably would be still talking about if we didn't get that. Uh, you know, Dean's been working on lighting for as long as he's been here, and that continues. Uh, the Potter Gym retrofitted with LED, uh, the, the Spring Gym is next, followed by Fast and Eisenhower. So you can kind of see the plan there, and, uh, Dean is working through the rebate programs, which we would have said to get as much back on all that as we can. So thank you for that, too. Um, I don't know what that'll add up to, but, uh, we're, you know, anything we can get back is good.
Is that something that you'll be able to tally up and report back, what the total rebate was?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Uh, and then academics, typically what you'll hear in our meetings is, um, uh, Mr. Savick meets with Ms. Coy, and we have a, a monthly meeting on our academic committee. So I don't know, if Mr. Savick could just touch base a little bit on, on some of the things that we have here?
There, there are a variety of dates that are important for, uh, the community to be aware of. Uh, January fourth through February second, we go through the I-Ready Universal Screening Reading and Math Winter Benchmark Window for grades five through eight, sort of helps establish where we are as a district at that point in time for those grades. January eighth and ninth, Facets, uh, rigorous curriculum design teams going through a training and a work session that ended today. Um, grades are final tomorrow, believe it or not. We're heading the second quarter already, and first semester is complete. Uh, um, January twelfth, K through six, PL Day, and seven through twelve, Work Day. Uh, there's no school. It's a federal holiday next Monday for MLK Day. January sixteen through February ninth, Audience Universal Screening Reading Winter Benchmarking for grades K through four. We have no school, President's Day on February nineteenth, and then on February twentieth, K through six conferences. There's no school for our kiddos and grades K through six. And again, thanks to everyone who is working together, has helped to elevate this district to a four-star district, and for everything that everyone continues to do to, uh, make sure that we're doing the very best we can for the children of our district. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
So, Hal, on that one, even though it doesn't quite say January twelfth, there's no school for the whole district, so it's a four-day...
Correct.
For the entire district.
Yep, students, students are out. Yep, students are out. So then just a couple things under the area. Really, communications wasn't necessarily a, a board committee at the time, but I do want to let you know the next edition of the Bird's Eye View will be coming out shortly. Uh, it's always a really nice, uh, newsletter that we put out, and thank you to Amy Hansen for her hard work publishing that and working with a number of us around the district to, to get that information. It's always something I'm very, very proud of. It's very visual, and, uh, we thank her for her work. Uh, uh, we are also transitioning, will be transitioning from our School Messenger to Bright Arrow, which, uh, whenever I or others send out a district communication to all families, it comes through the communication called School Messenger. You may not know that as a public, but internally. So now we're moving to another, uh, software called Bright Arrow. The reason we're doing that is not only can that allow us to continue to do the mass district, but we've had a gap in our ability to communicate directly from classrooms to parents or from coaches to their teams, um, because Remind, Remind, what is it, Remind? One-on-one?
I think it's...
Remind, just called Remind.
Remind.
Which we used quite a bit, or individuals used quite a bit around the district, changed their whole parameters and rules of how that can be used, and so their free service became not very, uh, easy to use, and, and frankly, you only had so much, so many communications you could do, from my understanding. The point is Bright Arrow is going to meet all our needs district-wide, top to bottom. Les has been researching that now for months. So we've settled. We've settled on that. He's in the mode of getting it, getting it proven. Uh, so I'm excited. And when, when we get to it more, we'll, we'll, we'll show what it is and, and how it will benefit all of us, uh, when we get to that. And finally, we also are working on a website refresh. So that's part of our strategic plan. All these things are part of our strategic plan that, that this year we said we would tackle. So by the end of the year, we're going to be in good shape with, uh, at least where we're headed, uh, with our website and some of our, uh, communication styles. So that's my report, unless there's questions.
Anyone? Okay, old business? No old business? Board discussion. Um, the Long Beach Wrestling Tournament is this weekend. Powerlifting is, their tournament is on the twentieth. Those are both at Clay. The Limelighters Theater Presentation, the Play That Goes Wrong is the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth of January. Um, Eisenhower goes to their sixth grade camp on the week of the twenty-ninth. They like the winter camp. Hockey, swimming, basketball, bowling, those are all, uh, up and running very well. Eisenhower won their, uh, won the Barton Wrestling Tournament over the weekend, which is a good tournament for that age group. And I was impressed with the communication this morning for school delays. I got notification by text, email, phone, and TV. And if anybody missed those notifications, I don't know how they could miss them.
Well, we haven't had one in forever, so our people were pretty in tune to hoping something like that might happen.
But anyway, I was impressed with that. That was very well done.
Good.
Any other discussion, board members?
I will say there's a basketball game going on home here, if anybody's interested. Playing to Leo Christian, boys.
Okay, anything else? Need for an executive session?
Nothing on my end, so.
No, I think we'll skip over.
Just reiterate the work session, I guess, meeting?
Yep. Uh, special and regular monthly meetings. Work session, January thirty-first. I give five o'clock.
We did say we would start earlier. If that still works, I don't know, Mr. Zawiski, Mr. Eversman, yeah, okay.
Thirty-first. And our regular meeting is February twentieth at six o'clock?
We said five o'clock for the...
Work session, yeah.
Work session.
Does that still work, you think?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that'll be...
In the, uh, administration building, yes.
Anything else for the good of the board?[1780.01]